I'm reluctant to do it without Jan, but I'm hoping she will be able to tune in. So I will call the meeting to order at 4:31. And I just want to suggest when we get to our agenda changes. So I'd like to suggest we move Tom's superintendent's report to number one, as he has to scoot out shortly afterwards and attend a negotiations meeting. So if that is okay with everybody? And did anybody have any other changes that they would like to make? Okay, great. And just as a chair's report, I just wanted to just say a couple of words about the situation we're finding us in currently in terms of, at least where I reside in Yarmouth and in the Hyannis area, there's been an explosion of cases. And so I just want to take this time to thank our staff at our building, from principal down to every single position there is, for their continued efforts around wearing face masks. They're keeping safe distances. And I know there's a little fluctuation in that. It's from a three to six now seems to be a safe distance. And hand washing, all those efforts and every other effort that's being made really does make the difference in terms of schools staying in business with kids in them. So just thank you for those heroic efforts. I know it's not easy. I know we all want it to end. But I think now, and I'm happy that we're all getting vaccinated, but even so, I just thought it was important to just reiterate that the importance of our continued efforts until the CDC releases us. So Martha?
Yeah, through the chair, I would just like to add as well. I read an article this morning, I think in The Times, I don't know, New York Times, about community helping people get through COVID. And ironically, we're all separated from each other and can't be together. But all of the community feelings that have been engendered have helped people get through this hard time, and especially kids. And there is not a stronger community that I know of than the one that Mary Beth and the staff has fostered at the elementary school. And I think that has a great deal to do with it. So.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members who need to speak? Martha? You're muted, Martha.
Yeah. I wanted to report in on the search committee's first meeting last night for the hiring of an interim superintendent. We spent the weekend separately reading, I believe, 15 or 16 application packets. Some of them were 20 pages long and taking notes. And when we met last night, a lot of the business had to do with choosing four or five candidates to bring forward to the joint school committee, to the rest of you for interviewing. We're going to interview four or five candidates on Thursday. We're not sending four or five to you necessarily, but we're interviewing four or five candidates. I'm pretty sure it will be five Thursday and on Monday. And they look good. There was almost complete consensus on the committee with recommendations. And we're feeling very, very positive about the people who have applied. So. And sad, Tom. It was mentioned several times.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other member that would like to speak at this time? All right, I'm going to move on to citizens speak. And seeing none, I am going to.
Hold on, Betsy.
I'm sorry, Claudia, sorry, I didn't see your hand.
That's okay, I just unmuted, thank you. This is Claudia Kopek Rosen. And I wanted to take an opportunity, and I think Martha's comments about community were a good segue to introduce, if you haven't already heard about it, the Fleet Fund to school committee members. It is a new nonprofit that was started. We started working on this over the course of the summer, but it became public and available to Wellfleet residents in December of 2020. And it is a nonprofit fund that was created to support Wellfleet residents in need. So if people have need assistance with rent, food, transportation costs, medical costs, paying an electric bill, paying for a cellphone bill, having a car repair, there is help out there. The community partners for the Fleet Fund include helping our women, homeless prevention council, Outer Cape Health Services, the Navigator Program, Lower Cape Outreach Council, the Wellfleet Elementary Schools or other schools in the district, but it's for Wellfleet residents only. So for instance, a high school guidance counselor could make a referral for a Wellfleet resident to the Fleet Fund for support. Council on Aging or House of Worship. So really, we are considering all requests for financial assistance, and it's very timely. So if somebody from one of the referring agencies makes a call to the client liaison, and who is Nancy Winslow of Wellfleet, and she works at the Truro Central School. This program was based on the Dexter Keizer Fund, which is a very similar nonprofit that exists in Truro for Truro residents. And Nancy was really familiar with that. So she's the client liaison, she would take the call. Let's say that somebody had a $650 auto repair for new brakes, and they didn't have the money. She would call myself and one other board member, and we would make an approval, and then we would be able to cut a check through Siemens Bank where our account exists and pay that vendor directly. We do not take direct requests from family members. It has to go through one of the referring agencies so we can vet, you know, a little bit as needed. But it's really a very flexible fund, and it is designed to help people immediately. They don't have to produce proof. They don't have to, you know, jump through a lot of hoops. And what we would prefer to do is sometimes, you know, some of the partner organizations can say, well, we can help with half of the rent. Is there anybody else who can help with the other half? And that's something the Fleet Fund can do. So just so that you know, it's out there. I know you can't see, but we are sending a flyer home in backpack mail going out to introduce this to families so that they are aware. So if you know of anybody in need who needs some financial support, the Fleet Fund is out there for Wellfleet residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Claudia. That's just another amazing example of what our school does. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Claudia.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Laura.
No, if people are looking to donate to that.
You can go to thefleetfund.org. There is the information about how to donate is there. And so you can donate, we have a PayPal account set up. You can donate through PayPal. Or if, you know, if there are larger donations where people need a tax credit for that, there is a form that you can print out with a mailing address that you could send a check to. So we've had some very generous donations to get us started. So we have a good pile of money in the account, and we want to help people with whatever their needs are. So the Fleet Fund, it's a beautiful website. If you just want to go and look at the website, it's a lovely website.
Yeah, for sure. That's great.
Darren Weatherspoon created it for us. He did a marvelous job.
Cool. Thanks.
Great. All right. Any other citizens speak? All right, so we will move into our priority business. We all take a motion for us to move into our public hearing.
Jill, so moved.
Second.
Great, and all in favor, we'll just do a roll call vote. Or maybe, can you see everybody, Arlen? Can you see hands? Okay, so we'll just do a vote by hand, all in favor.
Okay.
Great. So now looking for anyone wishing to ask questions from the public on our budget. Okay. Jan?
Not public quite yet, but yeah.
So we can move into discussion right afterwards. If there's not a public, I can pull us right out of this.
I wanted to ask about provisions in this budget for search monies. Since we're going to be doing some financial commitment, you know, finding a permanent superintendent replacement, that's going to cost, what is it, $12,000 or whatever? I wondered if this budget has some place to include that.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a motion to pull us out of public hearing, and then we're gonna start with a question during, I believe Mary Beth may have prepared a few remarks, and then we're gonna go right into Jan's question, okay? So I'll take a motion to come out of public hearing.
Jill Putnam's moved.
Okay, all in favor, please hold your hands up to come out of public hearing.
Okay.
Great. And Mary Beth, did you have, did you want to just sort of intro us into the now discussion and vote on our budget?
Sure, so what I did was I took the presentation that I gave to school committee last month, and I tried to formulate it. It's similar, but to be applicable to being a public hearing. So if I could read that, it's just over a page long.
Okay, was that my mistake? Did, I'm sorry to interrupt, but was that my mistake? Did you want to read it in the public hearing?
No, she's fine, this is perfect.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Wellfleet Elementary School believes that every child matters, is unique, deserves to feel safe, and has the capacity to learn. Regardless of in-person or remote learning, Wellfleet Elementary School faculty and staff demonstrate commitment to our mission to prepare each student to succeed in an ever-changing world by providing a rigorous academic program that integrates social, emotional, and global awareness. As demand shifted as a result of the pandemic, the West faculty and staff continue to work collaboratively with families to ensure every student receives the best in-person or remote learning experience. Wes, ever mindful of family's health and wellbeing, remains a community hub, providing appropriate supports, such as health and wellness information and resources for Nurse Rosen, social, emotional information and resources for Mrs. Francis, up-to-date school and district announcements, technology devices, learning materials, creative resources, and grab-and-go meals. As we plan forward, our goals and priorities are inspired by the changing educational landscape. Wes is dedicated to teaching 21st century skills, developing students' cognitive, interpersonal, and interpersonal competencies fundamental to global citizenship and supporting all students' social, emotional learning. The proposed FY22 budget reflects the resources needed to meet these goals. The proposed FY22 budget comes in at a 2.5% increase. In comparison, the budget increase in FY21 was 3.47%. And in FY20, we proposed a budget decrease by 0.79%. FY22 circuit breaker funds totaling $30,318 have been applied to prepay the FY22 special education preschool tuition. And the school choice funds totaling $10,000 have been applied to prepay non-instructional technology, such as internet access. The draft budget maintains all current academic programs, interventions, and the free after-school childcare program. As a result of ongoing negotiations with staff contracts, a salary reserve has been calculated into the budget and is noted at the bottom of the budget Excel worksheet. Also, two full-time educators announced their retirement effective June 30th, and an additional grade-three teacher position has been added as a result of the anticipated in-person class size of at least 24 students. Minor to moderate increases in specific line items, such as instructional technology, custodial supplies, and substitutes are directly linked to health and safety needs due to COVID-19. Substantial decreases in the costs associated with the Cape Cod Collaborative and the speech-language pathologist position, reducing from 70 to 50%, are reflected in the budget. Many line items are level-funded. The free after-school childcare program, for example, is level-funded since Wes has been unable to provide childcare service during the pandemic. In summary, the regular day portion of the proposed budget increases by $163,649 or 8.27%. And the special education portion decreases by $93,980 or minus 11.58%. The total increase then from FY21 to FY22 is $69,669 or 2.5%. The total proposed budget is $2,860,873. On behalf of the Wellfleet Elementary School students, faculty, and staff, I am profoundly grateful for all that our school community has accomplished under extraordinary circumstances. The hard work of educators, students, office staff, custodians, cafeteria workers, and parents is a tribute to the unwavering commitment we have to our students, their education, our families, and our community.
Very nice.
Great, that was, as usual, stellar. I want to bring us then immediately back to Jan's query on the budget in terms of funding we would need for our part of the superintendent's search next that will begin in October. Jan, anything to add before we get into that discussion?
Well, no, I just wonder if we have that contingency possibility. Also, I'm wondering about the new funding that's come down from the federal government and Wellfleet chair, and I'm hoping that we're gonna get a good whopping portion of that. And I want us to speak up right away so we don't get kind of sidestepped like we were last year time. And I also have wondered about the pool testing. I never heard any more, and that would be financial as well. I don't know if this is the right time to ask about that. But those are the things that have been going through my head.
Okay, so we have three topics in terms of budget that we want, we need to sort of think about. One would be the interim search in that on our budget. Two is the money coming in, and three, pool testing. Is there anybody who'd like to start there with any of those? Tom?
Oh, go ahead, you can go first, Martha.
You want to go, Martha?
I just have a clarification. I thought Jan was not concerned about the interim search, but the permanent search that starts.
I'm sorry, did I say interim? I apologize. Thank you. Tom?
Okay, thank you very much. So let's take on the idea of the financing of the, for the superintendent's piece and so forth. We are, without wanting to get into it, but in our negotiations, I believe that we're going to have a very good savings in terms of a couple of positions relative to being able to put it towards offsetting some of the cost of the process to hire the new superintendent. So it's trending very, very well for us, and I think we're gonna be okay right, right away. The second one you'd like me to speak to, Betsy, in particular order?
So why don't we just stick with money? So why don't we do pool testing?
So this has been a fascinating journey for me and for Mary Ellen Reed and a few others. As you know, we've been all over as things have changed to try to understand what makes the most sense. Our doctor that we have introduced you to on at least one occasion and some, a second occasion, does not have any interest in moving forward with pool testing. It just hasn't proven to be that beneficial. It just isn't, in his words, worth the effort. But what we are doing with our doctor is that he does have his own testing site in Brewster. He actually came out of retirement and started his own testing site. And he's willing to donate to any students or staff members who have the symptoms to be able to go to his own clinic and get tested free. So that's a wonderful donation on his part. And Mary Ellen has been working on this, and we've sent a few people there. Obviously, we want to get tested as soon as we can when we have the symptoms with anybody in our system, and that's where we stand, Jan, at this point.
Okay. Jan, do you have any questions about either? I'm sorry, I scooted.
Well, it just got left, and I, you know, I just didn't know. And I also am not privy to any outbreaks. So I think that is a big factor in whether we felt we had to do it or not. We've been so lucky so far, I guess, huh?
There's no question there, and there is quite a bit of excitement in the district in terms of teachers getting their shots, staff members getting their shots. And we've made a lot of progress with that. And with that comes a little bit more confidence from our staffs, I think. I, you know, I have one in me at this point, and I'm pleased to have it, and I'm looking forward to my second one. And so I think it's picked us all up a little bit in terms of safety. So that's really positive. The last piece I'd like to share, and I'll jump in on the third one, is, you know, there's a grant called Essa Grants. And quite honestly, Jan, there's a lot of money coming to the towns and a lot of money coming to the school system. And I hope you're okay with this, but I've been very aggressive with, as you know, we have a program in the summer for our special needs students and so forth. And I've had great conversations with Mary Beth and all the elementary principals about having a robust program for students who have fallen behind. And that fund, that will be funded by these grants. I believe we can have a coordinator of the program and multiple teachers involved in it. More than likely, I'll leave it to the principals to form it, but it could be a few hours a day, maybe four days a week. If we can tie in with rec, even better. And I believe the grants will pick up the entire cost for all of our elementary schools across the district.
We're talking not special needs, but everybody who's fallen behind.
As many as we can pick up. We're gonna pick up where we can. Exactly right.
Okay, yeah. Great use of funds, I think, yeah.
So I'm really excited about that. And I'm working with the region schools, our middle school and high school, to duplicate that same plan going forward. So we have the resources in this grant, and we should put them to, our mission is to help kids. And there's no question, there's plenty of kids who can benefit from a program like this.
Great.
Really happy for that. And so it's at a point now where all the elementary administrators have come together. They have a blueprint generally of how they want to see it go forward. And we've looked at the money, and we believe we have the money, and we're gonna keep rolling it out. So congratulations to Mary Beth and the elementary principals and the federal government for giving us money in an area where we're really gonna make a difference in kids, so.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
I have a couple of other points to make, if you don't mind, and might report if I can jump right into it, Betsy.
Okay, we're still in the budget discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's right.
Yeah, I know. So I'm gonna bring us back to the budget discussion. Is there any other discussion before we vote on our budget?
I just want, I think I heard you, it's, we're voting on the 2860873. That, that correct?
Yes, so if I were to receive a motion to approve the proposed FY22 budget for $2,860,873, so that number would be used in our motion. So if I could get a motion? Martha?
I move that we approve the 2022 budget for $2,860,873 as submitted by Mary Beth Rodman.
Okay, and I saw a second by Laura. So all in favor with your hand in the window? Okay. Any further discussion? All right, great. So we are now gonna scoot back to Tom, he's going to.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of other points to make. Giovanna and I have been traveling the entire Cape, talking to our communities about the budgets. And we've had some conversations with Fred McGee from the FinCom, and we've made ourselves available. If indeed they have a date, they would like us to come up and talk about the budget and so forth. And so we're closing in on finishing up these meetings. Orleans is another one that we're waiting for a date on, just their selectment. But much of the work has been done, and people have been very, very generous in their comments, and we are very, very appreciative of that. The other piece I'd like to say is the, I'm sure everyone seems to be aware of the DESI guidelines going forward. And one of the key points is that I know that our health and safety committees that we have through the union will be having meetings in each of the buildings just to check in and make sure everything is working as well as it has all year. And quite honestly, our elementary schools are in excellent shape to continue to move forward because so many of the kids came back from the very beginning. I mean, we've been, you know, you look at this and you shake your head and say, you know, what's the big deal here? But the vast majority of the state was out, and many, many elementary schools haven't been in at all. So congratulations to the staff and you as a school committee who stayed calm even with some interesting days. And boy, I tell you, the kids have really benefited from it. It's almost emotional for the work that is happening at Wes. So congratulations to everyone. And the real work is going to be from a bigger picture is the middle school and the high school. And I can just give you a taste of, at the middle school, they're looking to come out of that model and more than likely come back to a traditional schedule of six blocks in a day. And there's still a lot more to do. But, and Chris is in the same situation generally. They're just trying to finalize their data from the surveys. They have a pretty good handle on it right now, and that'll be a little bit different, a challenge for us than our elementary schools. And then there's a chance, I did talk with Mike Hurley and Mary Beth, there is a chance that the parent groups are interested to be out next Monday as they try to promote the idea of everyone getting out to vote on the high school building project. And so there might be a little bit more activity around that. But there's a lot of excitement as we wind this towards the actual vote in the ballot form next week. So thank you. And I know many of you have certainly been working hard to get the word out and talking to your friends and colleagues. And I, together we can. So thank you for your support on that. And I think that we're planning to do work every day until the 30th and to keep this going forward. So thank you.
Any questions or comments for Tom? Yes, Laura?
Yeah, I just, I, because I know Massachusetts as a state is loosening up in terms of. Yeah, I just, I, because I know Massachusetts as a state is loosening up in terms of travel for like spring break, are there still going to be, you know, advisories or mandatory quarantine type? Can the schools do that still with the state changing?
Well, you know, everybody's trying to understand the ever-changing guidance on this. And I was on with the commissioner today and there are a lot of things up in the air because I think every state is sensitive to what the federal government wants because so much money is coming our way. We had a long discussion about the testing today and it was very clear. You don't want to test, then you're walking away from $1.6 billion from the Department of Education. And so we're continuing to listen and, you know, I think, thank you for your words today, Betsy, in terms of, you know, some concerns in another area of the Cape. And we have to pay attention to this. And I think, you know, you're running in with a touchdown, it's been used a number of times on the news. You know, let's not fumble the ball on the 10-yard line and let's get in the end zone here. And, you know, we got a lot of life to live after these trying times. And so we're going to, we'll try to hold the line where we can, where we think it's reasonable. And the key is to keep everybody safe and until everybody gets that vaccination. So thank you, Laura.
Mary Beth?
I just wanted to add to that. I know I had a brief conversation with Claudia this afternoon and the nurses in the district will be getting together. So in our April newsletter, I had put in, you know, the draft, the mass advisory. So when we spoke today, I decided to take it out because I'm not quite sure if it's going to match what the NOSIT nurses come up with. So that, the April newsletter will be coming out on April 1.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I think just as a final comment on that, it's just so important for us to still send out those key messages. I am a little worried about travel over the, I think people are starting to feel more free. But I have full confidence in your team at West to do the right thing. So, thank you. Okay, Tom, are you, did we say adieu?
Yeah, so I'm going to jump into, we have negotiations, teacher negotiations actually going on at the same time. So I'm going to jump into that as well, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Keep up the great work.
And so we're going to move on to Mary Beth's principal report.
Thank you. So with the new regulations by the commissioner, we, part of the regulation was to survey parents of students who were not in the building. So not only our remote learners, but also the homeschool students. And so we have to date six students who are planning on returning April 5. We have two in kindergarten, one in grade one, one in grade two, one in grade three, and one in grade four. So it appears right now, given the square footage of all the classrooms, all of them will still be able to maintain six feet between students, seat edge to seat edge. Grade three might be a little less than that. So the goal, of course, is to be as close to six feet or at six feet. There is a new testing, tentative testing window for grades three through five for MCAS. So that has changed since this was published and it's May 10 now to June 11. So that testing window that was in your report has changed. All of them, ELA, mathematics, and for grade five, science, technology, engineering, all must be accomplished within a month's time, May 10 to June 11. Under school climate, my apologies for Read Across America, the "we" was misspelled. It says "we's". So that "s" should be a "k". And we, I did have a committee for, a search committee and interview committee for the head custodian position. And I'm happy to report that our current evening custodian, David Samuels, was hired as the new head custodian. So we are thrilled. And Mrs. Wallace had announced her retirement since we last met. And this year, Mrs. Wallace has been a full-time remote teacher. And Mr. Staker was able to take over her roles as Title I math teacher as well as librarian. And so he will remain in that role next year as a full-time teacher. And let's see, oh, the last piece that I just wanted to let you know is currently we have 15 confirmed incoming kindergarten students and with the potential of two more. So we could potentially have 17 incoming case. And that's it.
Any comments or questions for Mary Beth on her report?
Happy report, Mary Beth.
Thank you.
I'm just, I have a question about Mr. Staker. So isn't he our chorus in our? Will that be able to continue his work?
Yes, so it'll be, the Title I math will be 45%. His music will continue to be 45%, and then the library position is 10%.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I missed that. Anyone else have questions for Mary Beth?
I had one. It went right out of my head.
Happens to me all day long.
Okay, anyway, I might remember.
Okay, it looks like Laura might have a question. That gives you a few minutes there, Jan.
Okay, I thought. I wanted to ask about the homeschooling. Did any of those people decide to come back?
Yes, we have two coming back, same family. Yes, same family. Their two children are coming back.
Oh, good. I'm very happy about that. That's good. It's a wonderful thing, I think, if you have special skills to homeschool. But the socialization, I just love it when kids come to school. So and benefit from Wes's abilities. So, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Laura, did you have something?
Yeah, I just, I didn't know if I missed her. You said kindergarten 17 or 15, I'm sorry.
We have 15 confirmed currently. And we have two more who are potential.
Okay.
One, we know of, hasn't registered yet, so we've reached out to that parent and haven't heard back. The other parent is undecided if they're going to keep their child in preschool for another year or send them to kindergarten.
Okay, and Martha?
Mary Beth, I may, through the chair. I just learned that, by the way. Year seven. I wanted to know, or just offer, if Mr. Staker would like any help in the library. I've had some experience and am happy to volunteer, help choose books or whatever he needs. If the tiny bit of time, if there's anything I can do for you guys, once we get through the COVID piece, I'm happy to.
Thank you. I will extend that offer.
Way better than recess duty.
You were great at it.
Great. Anything else about Mary Beth's report? Okay, that's going to bring us to Giovanna and our FY21 expenditure report. It looks like she might be frozen. Oh, no, she's not.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
All right, so going to page 11 of the report. The prime off balance was $103,465. We spent or encumbered since last month's recording $8,838, leaving a balance, available balance of $94,627. We still have $20,000 of school choice, which was earmarked to be used in fiscal '21 to reclassify expenses to, so leaving a total balance of $114,627. We also have available money in the substitute line items totaling about $25,000. So let's look at the items that had movement of more than $1,000 since last month's reporting. Starting with page one, at the top of the page, line item 4016, salaries instructional coordinators. We spent or encumbered $2,544 since last month's reporting. Moving on to page two, at the top of the page, line item 4014, salaries teachers. We had an adjustment here. We spent or encumbered $4,812. And that is due to a change in personnel as a result of COVID-19. And that is it, just a couple of items. There was movement in the other line items, but it was small, under $1,000. So I didn't report on that. Any questions on the report?
I think Jan Mauth, good job.
Oh, I didn't see. Thank you, Jan.
All right. Thank you then, Giovanna. Jill?
A question for Giovanna and/or Mary Beth. I actually had it earlier when Tom was speaking, but I knew he had to go off to that meeting and I figured that there would be the appropriate place later on. I get that there might be some very ample government funds coming in. And I'm delighted that summer programs are being thought of. I'm just wondering, is there going to be enough staff? Do you have a clue that there's going to be enough staff to serve more of a need this summer as well as? Okay, so money is likely coming, but and plans are being made for summer school. But what if the money hasn't come in yet? So two kind of questions, wondering about staff, ample staff. And it might be too early to have that figured out anyway. And then the money piece.
I could answer the staff piece. I have not had a problem in summers past to be able to recruit people who want to work. The challenging thing I think that's going to be for West this summer is that we're having a fire suppression system installed. So I'm sure the ceilings will be torn apart. So I spoke to Tom about relocating, if possible, either to Eastham Elementary School for our West students and staff who are able to work. And he also offered the library at the high school, so it would be a little less of a commute. And he did reference the hours, so it would be either 8 to 11 or 9 to 12, trying to back it up to rec departments so that kids are not missing that social opportunity. And also looking at if they'll be, if we'll be able to have bus service so parents don't have to be dealing with if there are any issues with beach traffic, et cetera.
So glad to hear that transportation's part of the plan, especially if we have to relocate. That'll, I think, really help parents. Good question, Jill. Thanks. All right. Anything else there? I'm going to move us to our reports and information. Jill, do you have a Cape Cod Collaborative report?
I have two reports, actually three, that I worked really hard to condense. We have missed, well, there's two meetings to report. The February 10 meeting and the March 10. So I've condensed both of those and then I want to add on after this a little report on the legislative breakfast that was on February 12. So the treasurer of the Cape Cod Collaborative staff member, William Freer, got wonderful evaluations from all of us and he's done such a good job that other collaboratives are looking at him and also our collaborative as a model. So kudos for that. Transportation, as we know, has been challenging. The template for invoicing keeps being adjusted. Bus drivers have to do extra cleaning, disinfecting. There was an issue with a lot of drivers of a certain age not getting their vaccinations yet, not wanting to drive until they did get their vaccinations. So it's actually looking better for that. But there's been many changed start times and some of the districts that are having the athletics. So in some ways, transportation costs have gone up, drivers need more money and more time, and so on. Strategic planning, the collaborative, it's more than time for the collaborative work on their strategic plan. But of course, with so many districts involved with this collaborative, the timeline and the process is being hammered out. There's going to be an addressed, I'm sorry, I just got like an incredible distraction. All right, the strategic plan, so the, because of the pandemic, of course, we know what some of the consequences are going to be, such as, you know, social and emotional learning issues as well as the learning gaps. But for staff, administrators, children, families, some of this is quite known and some of this is not quite known as far as what the consequence is going to be. So that's going to be woven into the strategic plan as well. There was a sort of assessment by the Department of Ed, just a regular assessment. And of course, not surprised, there were no citations. So they came out of that quite well. There were a few minor and very minor suggestions. And as somebody who also assesses programs, I have a feeling that they were just digging to have something to write up. Because of Dr. Nita Woods, who's been working for so many years as the director of special ed for the collaborative, and she's done an amazing, amazing job, there has been a lot of time and thought as to what is that going to look like after she retires this June. So we did get to meet all three directors now of, whether it's the STAR program or the Waypoint program, or the director of everything. So the director, the special ed director, she already has experience because she's been the assistant sped director. So she's well seasoned and she'll be stepping into a need issues as far as the director of special ed. And it was nice to meet the other two folks who have joined. This is quite exciting. And Martha, you might really want to pick up your ears on this one, since you're on the committee for the superintendent. As you know, the collaborative does a lot of professional development and something new called COFI, just like the beverage. It stands for Collaborative Framework for Educational Evaluation. And so it's a collaborative framework for educational evaluation. And it's designed for administrators, new administrators and department heads who are or will be responsible for supervision, observation, evaluations. And this is supposed to be culturally savvy, you know, within various contexts. So that will be just another service that the collaborative will have for all districts. And that's about all I know.
Jill, I signed up to take it. I started. Yeah, I'm very excited. It looks amazing. So very excited.
Oh, I'm so glad to hear that. And, you know, whether it's our interim or whether it's our long-term superintendent, it's just something that might be helpful. And, right, a service for the districts. All right, there's so much more, but I'm just going to run to the breakfast, which I really want to report on. And Martha, when I'm done, you know, feel free to add on because Martha also attended the so-called breakfast. It was very exciting. Of course, Julie and Seer and Sarah Peak always have attended. And it was just so great to see them, work with them. And as always, it was just a wonderful turnout of legislators. There were 80 participants, including Martha. There were 80 participants, including Martha. And what we first had was some people would speak and then we broke out into discussion groups and technologically it happened so quickly. I was so impressed, you know, there was such time efficiencies. So after all the intros and opening statements and that sort of protocol, boom, we're in these little groups. And the people, we were pretty much grouped in region. So and each group had at least one legislator. So we had Sarah and Julian. And in each little group, there would be a facilitator and Mike Riedon was our facilitator. And each member was invited, each member of a group was invited to identify one concern to bring up. And we only had a few minutes to bring up that concern and speak to it. And it was very time efficient, like boom, you know, you had a very limited amount of time, the whole group. And then we all came back as a group. Oh, yes. And in our group, it was very strongly social emotional concerns, you know, the fallout of the pandemic. And then when we came all together, there would be a summary from each group about what seemed to be the various patterns. And no surprise, seemed like every other group also had social emotional concerns besides learning gaps and vaccinations, getting staff vaccinated, children vaccinated. No surprise, there was statistic, I believe Julian brought it up, that 36% of Outer Cape mental health issues, I mean, it's gone up 36% for Outer Cape mental health issues. Julian had said that there's a telehealth pilot that's dealing with emotional, social, that he felt that we would be benefiting from it sooner or later. Zona Butler, who is a school committee person on the collaborative as well as for Nantucket, she presented on race. She's a woman of color, so it was really good, you know, to have somebody not only talking about racial equity and experiences, but you know, lives it. Then this was-
I'm sorry, Jill, could you repeat her name for me, please?
Zona, Z-O-N-A, Butler. B-U-T-L-E-R. And I'm almost done, but it's important, I feel.
Oh, no, I need, I'm looking for somebody. So thank you. I needed that.
Sure. So there was Glenn Kuchar, the representative of MASK. And he gave a brief offering of what MASK that represents us is doing and what they're lobbying for and what they're standing for. So at the White, at the White House, at the State House, they're standing for special funding and study efficiencies, something that is near and dear to my heart, economies for small rural districts. And in mind is Franklin County, Hampshire and Barnstable. Yeah, full funding, the Student Opportunity Act, Circuit Breaker, Child Service Safety Net, I'm just running through their priorities. Rethinking appropriateness of testing accountability. And also even perhaps looking into, once again, local graduate requirements. Charter school and community consent. So communities having a say in a charter school opening up in their district. So the MASK legislators also presented what they're advocating for, their platform and operational efficiencies. MCAS suspending it for 2021, but I think that's old news now, suspending the MCAS. Relief transportation for regional, which would make a difference in our budget because we're hurt with regional transportation. We don't do well with that kind of being regionalized for transportation. And Circuit Breaker, a more fair Circuit Breaker, you know, that will help budgets and not get so affected by one out of district child that needs to be placed. And I wish I could present more, but I'm going to wind this up. One thing, I, you know, I'm working away from home, but I'm also doing site visits and I had a conflict that couldn't stay because of my work. One piece I saw the beginning of was, it was exciting that the topic was race equity and there were actually two students from Mashpee that were part of this, part of the panel and the presentation. And it was really quite frustrating that I had to get off and go back to work. But I do want to add that I haven't looked at it yet, but Nicole Bartlett, who is our representative on MASK for our district, Nicole Bartlett, and I'm guessing that school committee people got it. But she did send an email to school committee people that this, the whole thing was audio recorded. So if people want to hear the, whether it was the students, the race equity piece at the end of it, or, you know, all the presentations, all the summations of all the different groups, it appears that people can listen to it. So thank you. Sorry, this was too long, but it was two meetings, actually three meetings, you know, the breakfast and the two meetings that we missed.
No, I always find your reports very informative, Jill. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I took lots of notes.
And Martha might want to add something because Martha was there too.
Martha?
Of course. Actually, what I want to add is really more appropriate for future agenda items. So when you ask about that, I'll, I'll bring it up. But the, I'm sorry, you missed the students. One especially was so articulate. They were both great. But they got my head thinking an awful lot. I'll talk about that in a little while.
Okay, thanks, Martha. Okay, so now we'll move on to preschool enrollment. Any questions on what was in the packet? All right. There's no PTA liaison. So that brings us to Martha with Behavioral Health Task Force. Do you have an update?
Sadly, we were supposed to have a meeting yesterday afternoon and I had an email that it was postponed. We're not meeting again, I fear, until May. And I will say nothing more about that.
Okay. And school council. Up, you just muted yourself.
I've not met since, I believe, January. And Mary Beth reported on that at our last meeting. If anybody wants, I have the notes. So if anybody wants more, I think Mary Beth did a great job on it. We're going to meet on Monday. That's also in Mary Beth's report. Thank goodness. And we'll be talking about the community school section of the strategic plan in order to finish our, our plan for the school. So I'm excited about that.
Yeah, and I, I think I'm remembering that Mary Beth said that as soon as the plan is finished, maybe we would be getting a presentation on that, correct? Like June or something?
Yes. So we meet next Monday to review the whole draft. And then we meet one more time to put any finishing touches on it before it goes to press. And then I will present it to the school committee at our June meeting.
Great. I look forward to that. All right, I will move us on to Housing Task Force. Nothing, Jan? Okay. Okay. I'm going to hold out for her.
Okay, yeah. I guess it is new in a way, but not surprising. The task force went to the selectmen who have approved our proposals. So that is going out momentarily, forbid. Very exciting.
Jan, I think I'm talking, so I was reading something earlier this week, maybe from some report somewhere. But all the pieces that came together around the water and the housing and it's just really, and so thank you for that work because I think it's going to mean so much for our town.
I think so. I hope so. It takes so long, you know. We've been working for almost two years to get it ready. And it'll be at least two more years before all the permits could be in place and all of that happens. So you say, oh, come on, let's go.
Yeah.
But anyway.
But worth it in the end, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. So that brings us to future agenda items. And why don't we just start with Martha?
Thank you. Actually, Jill, I was, one of the things that did come up often in different kinds of conversations on that day during the legislative breakfast were, for me, the biggest one for me was that learning that some school systems had taken the Massachusetts Association of School Committee policy on anti-racism and adopted it themselves. Almost, in some cases, almost word for word. And I have been working, going online and looking at different, different policies. And I would like to bring the possibility of having that kind of policy here in Wellfleet, but maybe district-wide and perhaps bring that up at a future agenda. Not just anti-racism, but issues around gender identity too. I think there are all kinds of things. And also what our hiring practices are like. And look at our school committee to, just to bear in mind that, that we, we do have some work to do as a system. The, the other piece was that, the other thing I noticed on websites as I was going down this particular rabbit hole is that some school committees actually have a mission statement and a list of goals, which might be another thing we could think of district-wide or just here in Wellfleet. I probably shouldn't have done this because I'm just making a lot of work, but I can't stop myself. The other question I had was that I'm part of this citizens group. And part of the work in the citizens group was to try and find out what school committee seats were open on different school committees Cape-wide. And one of the things that I found when I was trying to do research just for our district is that there are no email addresses for any of us on the website where it talks about school committee members. And that isn't true in many of the districts out on the Cape. But there's no way for people to really reach out to us if they have questions or concerns. And I know that there's a whole protocol of what people should do, especially if it's a, a school issue. But I do think we should consider that, having a way for the public to be able to reach us. And then the last thing also came up at that citizens committee and it was talking about what we do with new school committee members and people who want to run for school committee. But certainly, once people are on the school committee, and Laura, I apologize to you because it's too late. But I was lucky to have a lot of people on the school committee who served as my mentors, you know, especially Mort, because he was also a neighbor. I, I, it had been really, really helpful and maybe the possibility of somehow having a mentor for our new school committee member. And maybe for Laura, you know, too. We could have a step system or something. But thinking about that kind of a help because it is a steep learning curve. You know, I'm still not sure I understand Circuit Breakers or cafeteria funds, so. Full disclosure.
Okay, so just before we move on to any other ideas, I just want to make sure I captured everything so that when I have my conversation with Tom, I, I want to make sure I'm bringing your ideas. So the first agenda item could be talk, basically with the heading of racism, but the bullets are developing a policy for either our specific school district or the larger, you know, so that work might happen at the larger policy level. Considering our hiring practices at West in terms of racial equity. Considering our school committee and how we, we get-
And district-wide hiring practices as well.
Okay. And then, so, and then so I said policy. So there's kind of like three subheadings underneath that topic. Is that correct? Is that how you see it? I mean, definitely some of them go together, but is that how you-
Gender, gender issues as well.
Okay, so maybe it's more of an equity. So there's equity and then there's racial equity. So maybe that's the title. There's equity slash racial equity. And then we can consider hiring practices, school committee and policies.
Yeah, yeah. Also, it's big. I don't think we should try to do it in two weeks when we meet next.
I, you know, I'm not going to say that it's going to be on next time.
Absolutely.
Certainly not everything you talked about could go on one agenda, but you know, I think it's important to at least surface the ideas and then we can make a plan for how to begin. Because I also see that like, you know, it might even be a good first step to work on that idea of mission statement and goals. Because to me, that connect into some of the goals we might have for our committee in the future.
People want to have that. I mean, it's just ideas that I came up with as I was-
Okay, so then the other one was, which seems like a smaller discussion would be how we are, how the public contacts us. So we need to have that. And then mentors. So those are all the things that you brought up.
I think so.
So I guess the first thing then, moving forward on future agenda items is, are we in agreement that we want our time focused on these? Does anybody have any opinions or they don't think one of those things should be on our agenda? Just want to give the other members a chance to speak to Martha's brainstormed list.
Yeah, I, I mean, I-
Laura.
I mean, I, I fully agree. I, I think I told you all, when I sat in on Colise Warnham's. She was, she, a while back, she did a, she spoke. And then I sat in again. She did a second one a few weeks ago. And she spoke to all of these things and they've all been swirling in my mind. I wasn't sure how to bring it up. So Martha, thank you, because these are things I've been wanting to also bring up. So I fully would love to see this type of talk on our agenda, or at least the beginnings of it. So I'd fully support that.
Excellent. And Jill, I thought I saw your hand flutter up. Did you want to add?
Um, yeah, I feel like they all have a place on the agenda. I, I just, you know, I have opinions, but now it's not the appropriate time to talk about it because it hasn't been posted on the agenda.
And I'm just, so I'm just also going to wonder a little bit aloud if, you know, maybe Mary Beth has some thoughts about this. You know, we, sometimes we don't know if things are already in play. So certainly, you know, an opening discussion might give us all the time to sort of talk and, and so this gives Mary Beth time to process. It gives Arlen time to process, like are there policies already that we, we address some of these things that? So I will, you know, I'll go through it with Tom at our meeting and then we'll try to be organized so that it's not, you know, we, we're going to have to, you know, realize time. I, I don't really like to have meetings that go past six o'clock. So I think, you know, an hour and a half is plenty of time to, to get our business done. And we may begin to a point where we have less business, you know, and it's a great time of the year. You know, COVID will always come first, but after that, with our budget done, we, we may have some, some time to play with. Okay, is there anybody who has anything else to add to our future agenda item list? How about planning a special celebration for Jan? She's saying no.
As you know, Jan, you never know when and where we're going to show up.
Mini parade time?
Very, but I would like to put my two cents in about sooner than later, doing the mentor idea because you are going to have a new person. And, you know, the sooner the better for that particular one. And I think that can be implemented rather quickly. Whereas some of these other things have to be wordsmithed and worked and, you know.
You can practice on Laura.
I started. I started that idea. Jill, something else?
Again, you know, this is getting into a discussion, so I might as well put my two cents into it. Or I'll just hold off till next month, but this is turning into a discussion. But as far as the mentor thing, I feel like it's a really good thing to explore. But and in addition, I feel like we really do need to have though, clear boundaries. So depending on who's the mentor and what do they volunteer with. I, I do feel we need to think about when we truly do discuss this. Boundaries. So in other words, a school, we all have different, there's been times where sometimes there's not a consensus. Sometimes we have different opinions about things and that's healthy. But certainly if the mentor is working with the new person, to be really clear, just like if one of us was to put something on Facebook, this is my opinion as an individual. This does not represent the school committee. And I know that MASK does have the orientation, what I understand is a really good orientation for new school committee people. And it's not just one, it's ongoing for any of us to take advantage of. But they do have orientations for new people. So Martha, I applaud your idea to have support, you know, for a new person. But I feel we need to be very careful, just like if we were, once again, on Facebook, this is my opinion. Or, you know, these are my thoughts. This might not be the way it is, you know, we both need to look into this or whatever.
Thank you, Jill. That's, that's, that's really, I think, although it's bordering on discussion, I think that makes it worthwhile to put on the agenda, actually. That's. And Martha, when it does come on the agenda, I'm wondering if you might have supporting resources. Like you obviously heard this. Was this just your idea or did you hear like a presentation on it?
I did not hear a presentation at one of the committee meetings that, the citizens committee meeting that I went to. It was discussed that when people were trying to find people to run for school committees, that in many, many towns, there would be only one person running, which has happened here. And or people are hesitant because they don't know how much time it's going to take or they don't know exactly what, what the commitment is, which is really important for people to know from the get-go. But also, once they were talking mostly about people running and how to help them through the process, I think that that gets a little tricky because we obviously don't want to publicly support a candidate. You know, we cannot do that. So I was thinking more of how we can support people when they come on board. Because I just remember, I, I think it took me my full first term to feel comfortable enough to have an opinion about anything. It didn't stop me from expressing my opinion, but sadly. But I, I certainly took a long time to feel confident in what I was saying.
Oh, so it seems like this is in terms of an agenda item, I think it might be wise to start it as the idea of this nice thing that's happened, that's begun to happen with this documentation to put out there. I noticed it went out in our backpack mail, I believe, Mary Beth, about seats that are open and some information. So I think that is like a very, that is a step in the right direction so that we aren't faced with trying to do some independent recruiting. And so, you know, I think it's worth a conversation and then we can sort of see where we all end up. All right, I am going to move us out of this future agenda items. I think we have plenty for the future. And I'm going to.
I'm sorry, Beth, excuse me. I just wanted to say that if it will help you to frame anything about the, the equity thoughts that we're having, to frame it or organize it, I'd be happy to, to, to talk to you about it or help you with it.
Okay.
Setting that up.
Okay. And I mean, so basically I take my notes into a Zoom call with Tom. I sort of expressed the, the will of the group. But I may call you and just, you know, ask you to lead, start leading the discussion, you know, like lead it off since it came from you. That's what I generally do. If somebody asks for something, I get it on the agenda. And then I say, why don't you take the lead on introducing? So I'll let you know. Does that sound good? Okay. All right. So looking for approval of minutes?
So moved.
Beth, did you mind? I just wanted to, there's just one edit I wanted to make to the minutes.
Okay, great.
And it's just under my report, Mr. McHugh, I just wanted to correct the spelling of his name.
Okay.
So it is M C H U G H.
Okay, so we have that one edit. Jill, would you like to change your motion?
So move with the, with the edit.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Okay, second from Laura. Thank you. And all in favor, please show your hands in the window. Arlen, you're still with us?
Yes, I'm there. Thank you.
I thought so. Yep, good. All right. And bills have been paid. I checked that off my list a little bit earlier today. And so I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Yeah, so moved.
And so I believe between Jill and Martha, we got a move and a second there. All right. Thanks, everybody. We'll be together soon. So take care and everybody stay safe. Okay, bye.